That's why I've been supportive and will probably continue to be supportive. But to Sarah's point, John, we listened to all the comments that we had and we will continually evaluate and we would certainly listen to the input from any community members, especially about whether or not the actual experience of their child going through the system is the one that we think they're going to get, which is the educational experience that challenges that student in the way that student challenges. And that's what we're hoping to get, John. So will this, can I tell you right now, will this be 100% successful, blah, blah? No, I can't say anything like that. I can say the evidence certainly indicates it's the right approach to take. Our administration has made a great case. They took some heart from the board and at this point, at least I am supportive.
Well, and I've read the articles that you sent. I went and read many of the citations. I went and bought the book on the Rockville Center Long Island School District, whose integration is really absolutely nothing like what we're trying here. It took place in a middle school, at a high school, it took place over the course of six to eight years. And so what I'm really looking for is the school we're emulating. Who was it that did this and it was successful? Pointed out Evanston. Black students' scores trended down and we're nine years out from the, or eight years out at least from the Evanston experiment. And I know we're not Evanston, but who are we emulating? Who are we, who has done this that we're saying? And maybe it's a question for Greg, but I'd like it more to address in a public session at some point. Who has made this work? Because you're saying the evidence says, once we get to the outcome of this, technically it should be better. But I've not come across, and I've been asking for months now, of the district that did what we're doing and came up with a result that we will want.
So John, all I can say is what we're going to emulate is what the best evidence indicates works in these situations. And so that is providing appropriate professional development to our faculty so that they have the skill sets they need to be adept at the implementation, as well as providing appropriate supports to our students, both the students coming in that are maybe more challenged academically and the students that are incredibly high performing and gifted. We need to provide them the supports and the challenges they need to be successful. And we will, as a board, task our administration with bringing us the best practices and the evidence that supports the best practices they are suggesting to meet those particular implementation goals and strategies.
So in the consciousness of time, I'm going to ask Mr. Coffey, Coffey, Mr. Isley, to be very succinct but specific in your response. I think Ms. Harris wanted to say something, but we have a young lady here who's waiting, a young lady over there, a gentleman, and I don't know, Mr., if you want to repeat.
I may ask another question if you have time, but I will.
Okay. So right now, we still have quite a few people and we want to give the board the opportunity to your closing remarks and let everybody out right now. Mr. Coffey, Mr. Isley. Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Harris, you wanted to make a comment on this?
Before we get to the TIF piece, hi, John. I think that in no time in our conversations have we heard anything or seen any of the research that has demonstrated that the curriculum would be watered down. Not one time. But this seems to be a very prevalent idea that keeps resurfacing, that in order to do this, we must, in essence, dumb down the curriculum somehow. But that has not one time been said, mentioned, or even, it's not part of the conversation that we have heard, that I've heard. I have not heard that one time from our administration. And it leads me to an idea about assumptions that could be being made because that has not been explicitly said. I'm trying to fully understand where that idea is coming from, that in order for us to do this, there has to be some loss of rigor to the course. I don't, I have not, in my experience as an educator, and I appreciated that another educator was here, in my experience, I have not seen the curriculum altered in the spaces that I've been in order to make it accessible or enrich it. So I'm concerned and I've given pause at this idea that in order for us to accomplish this, there has to be some loss because that's not how, that's not how any of the research has been demonstrated that we've seen and that's not been in one conversation that we've had. And that's not been in anything that's been said by the administration in any public forum. So I'm just, it just leads me to a question, why this keeps coming up as an idea that has to be part of it when that is clearly not part of it.
Well, and I'm guessing it wasn't said in Evanston and I'm guessing it wasn't said in District 97 and we haven't been shown the school where it was implemented and worked. So I think that's where some of the concern comes from, even if the administration is saying, we won't dumb it down, we've not seen the successful model.
Can I just, can, just to that point, it feels, and John, I would be happy to talk with you further about this, but there seem to be the conflating two things. At one point, you're saying with Evanston that students, black students, didn't perform better and then also the discussion of less rigor. And I'm not clear how less rigor, if black students did do well, that doesn't report the idea that there was less rigor. So I, the two things seem to get muddied and I agree that there's some things underlying these conversations that as a community we're going to continue to talk about. And the other is, and I have to say, this is a little surprised hearing from you, who are we emulating? Because my entire time working with you, it has always been about this school, this community being trailblazers. So yes, using best practices, yes, using the best research at hand, but doing what's best for our schools. So emulating has never been, you know, from the I D A for the collab to our imagined work to all the things that we've been doing. I continue to hope that this district is emulating best practices, but doesn't need to look to one specific school as, okay, now we can do it because they've done it.
Yeah, I mean, I, it would be comforting to be, to have a school where this has worked and not be trying to be the first one, but that's, I understand and we can talk about it. And my only hope is that you all keep an open mind and there will be a debate as to whether, when the information is all right to take. So that's.
Now, we're going to respond to your TIF question and we have a total of 19 minutes before we have to be out.
And I want to respond to the first question. No, I just want to respond down the, in terms of the mind, there are, you know, I, you know, I'm still learning and there are, you know, things that are in the works that I'm awaiting, which is, what are the outcomes that we're going to be targeting? What are the measures? What is our PD program going to be that is going to support this? So there's work that is underway that, until it's brought forth, that is part of this, this is, in my mind, not a done deal. That's all part of the process. So that way. Now, for something more exciting, TIF. And this is a discussion really that is a preview because on Thursday is when there will be a discussion by the board on the levy. So I will speak to it and just frame it up from my context and then throw it to somebody else. So because this year in our levy, well, I'm going to go two different ways. When we met as a board, I'm saying last year at this time, and I'm not exactly sure of the date, we were talking about the forward financial direction of the district because we have in front of us some significant capital needs. We have, as a district, not done much in the capital end for a long period of time and we're past due. So we looked and set a direction that said, if we can continue to, you know, take the levy with a CPI increase and hold our expenses to that level, then we can sustain ourselves over a longer period of time and finance a portion of what this building is doing. That was a discussion that we had. We're now coming up on a re-rack of that to discuss what's going forward. And there really are three pieces that are moving in the levy. One is, we do have TIF dollars that are coming in and, you know, we were getting some of that on an annual basis. So the increment of that, I believe, is about $800,000 a year, just to put a number on it. The second piece to the puzzle is, this past year, as a district, we abated another piece of expense to the tune of $5.8 million. And so that was another step in a long line of things that you had early involvement in, in terms of not, you know, just taking everything you could. But that piece, you know, we had stepped back and we have to assess what we do with that. And then you've got the CPI. So as a board, we're going to debate which of those three pieces are, you know, what's, I guess, the best thing in the interest of our community? And also can we sustain, you know, the facilities? A key part to that is expense control. And, you know, if that, if that's not done, then that model doesn't work.
I have to pick up where I'm coming from here. I guess those are the three pieces that we were looking at. And we had a rather robust discussion of this last Tuesday in terms of how we felt about it as a board. You know, if you simply looked at the expenses historically that the school spent and even, even took a haircut of those expenses that we spent and rolled them out into the future, it suggests that from a financial responsibility standpoint, knowing the capital investments we have, we should be, as I think Dan put it, we should be taxing, taking the full CPI, taking the full TIF and taxing to the max. I can't remember what the, what the phrase was. But I think what the, what I felt, and I don't want to speak for the rest of the board, but I think there was some support, was that, you know, that, that puts us, we've had a lot of focus on the revenue side of things and trying to manage the revenue side of things and adjusting it. And really to go forward in the, in the best way, we have to start looking at the expense side of things. Because that expense curve only gives us one answer, which is to stay in balance. We have to continue to tap the rate that I didn't find quite comfortable. So that's a debate for this upcoming week as to what we need to do. Now, there is a reality here and that is we have some capital needs that we need to spend on. And where we don't want to find ourselves is in deficit mode or too much in deficit mode and capital needs. If we do both of those, we're going to create a deficit, we're going to create a big cliff. And if we create a big cliff by not sort of managing a soft landing or managing this side in a, in a more fought way, then we're going to find ourselves down the road asking for a referendum, which puts the whole community in a really awful situation. And that's not a choice at all. You know, we want that, if there's a referendum to come, that referendum needs to be about choice of things, one, not about crisis or nothing. So trying to manage a soft landing gets us in a position where if that referendum comes, the decision is different than crisis and it just helps us manage this over the long term. So.
Thank you.
So we're going to take this young lady, the two people over there, and then we're going to finish up with this process. And then we'll have the board, each board member quickly do some closing statements. I know this was quickly. And if it's 8:59, we will.
All right. My name is Jess. I'm a senior here. I'm also a member of the same, it's our feature environmental group, and I'm also in the Marquee Heart Club. But my question is a little bit more specific. So it pertains to your claim that, it's already been mentioned before, but the claim that you purchased 100% renewable energy for the next three years. And many of my friends, including myself, were excited by this announcement, but we were surprised that it was so sudden and without much additional information. To my knowledge, it's difficult but not impossible to purchase and actually use 100% renewable energy unless it is produced in the building itself, solar panels or geothermal energy. So my question is, how did you ensure that the energy you purchased is 100% renewable? And do you plan to give students more information about this plan?
The board may not be able to answer that question. That's an administrative. Again, that's the gentleman with the answer. Does that help you? Do you want the board to still make some kind of battery energy, but how do you guarantee it and how that operates, that on the management side?
Yes. What you're talking about is the expectation and that is the information we're given. And in terms of, this is only the beginning, solar panels, as we're looking at the new construction, what I learned today about not having a water filling station thing in here. I mean, there's little things and big things, Styrofoam has to go too, but to your point, that is the board's understanding and that expectation that you're talking about.
And I just say, you know, even from a board perspective, yes, we made that decision and it was opportunistic. And the whole point of having a sustainability policy and revisiting that is to make it systemic opportunistic. So we agree with you and that's why we're taking that direction.
And I will add, at the December special board meeting, which is the 7th of 12th, in the month after community hall, we'll be bringing to the board a commitment statement to green energy with Planet Green.
And I would just, I don't know what students are involved with that, but it sounds like we have a committed group of students and they can provide some input.
Actually, we're working with members of Planet Green, Gary Kunt. Thank you.
Hello, board. My name is Nancy Alexander. I'm a recently retired middle school teacher, 32 years. My last, my last child graduated from here eight years ago. I just have a couple of comments that I'd like to make to Ms. Anne and to her students who, who was isolated in her honors classes. That was exactly the experience of both of my children going through on the honors and AP track. They were isolated. My son dropped out of AP staff because he was the only black person in that class and he didn't want to be the only black person in that class anymore. So that is common and persistent and that needs to be fixed. I suspect, well, I have a comment about teachers of color and how they are recruited. You cannot just have jobs there and expect teachers of color to show up and you are going to hire them. You have to recruit them. If that means going down south to HBCUs or going across town to Chicago State University where many are trained, then, then the HR director must be directed or encouraged to create those sorts of relationships so that there is a pipeline of students of color coming out of education programs that then could be recruited for Oak Park River Forest High School. It doesn't just happen. It's work and has to be done consistently over many, many, many years. And the minute you stop doing it, that's when you start seeing laps in faculty of color. Also, faculty of color need to be allowed to teach those honors and AP programs, okay? Because right now, your teachers of color, particularly in English department, I know this because I'm so here, they're offering wonderful classes to regular students and why, why aren't they teaching at AP or an honors level? Is that because they don't want to? If they don't want to, that's one thing, but there are very, very few teachers of color that are teaching at honors and AP track classes, okay? And that, that can be changed, that can easily change. I have a comment about restorative justice. I don't like restorative justice. I like transformative justice. Restorative justice takes the system as it is and fixes one little decathlon. It's one incident that happened, you know, what were you thinking when you did that? How do you, how do you think the others could know? What could you do differently? That's still within the same system that created the injustice in the first place. We have to think more revolutionary, we have to think transformative justice and put in other ways of dealing with situations where student behavior has to be looked at and transformed, okay, by looking at formulary accounts, okay? You cannot do that in a restorative justice system, it has to be transformative. But my question, my question is, where is the Oak Park River Forest faculty in terms of being equity trained, for instance, through a C program or beyond diversity or whole clubs, how to be an anti-racist, for example? And could the community be invited to participate in those equity training opportunities? Go ahead, Jen.
I'm actually on this board because when I came to the board to ask the questions about my daughter's white male aggressions, I was told that 93% of the staff had attended training and 93% of the staff, I've still been told that, has attended some form of diversity training. What I want us to move away from or move towards in our discussion is that it's not only a training, but it's ideology and it is a white supremacy culture ideology, that there's a framework for having a conversation around that that we do not always have, that is difficult to have, that is challenging to have and is probably challenging to hear in this room right now. But I think that we are, I think, from my experience as a parent here and having been a student here, that the conversations that we need to have need to shift a little bit. So having a bunch of people trained in a diversity training does not necessarily mean that we're going to have a shift in actions and behaviors and outcomes in the classroom. In order to do that, we have to establish a culture of respect. We have to establish cultures that value each person. We have to remove the ideology that exists. And we're not doing this in a vacuum as educators in the United States of America. This is not happening as like over here in the schools, we're doing this and in Oak Park, we're doing this. Because I don't know if you've been on any news feeds and on Facebook, what's happening in the schools is happening in our community. So I just, I don't want us to, I don't want us to miss the point. And the point is, there's a lot more that we need to do. Now, I am extremely pleased that we adopted a racial equity policy, but policy is only as effective as the people implementing it. And so the people within the systems have to do some changing. And I feel that that was why I ran. I feel that that's why I continue to do the work in all the spaces that I do it in, is to push for those changes. But it's not a one-time conversation and it's not, there's not one piece that's going to get us to shift our ideology. It is an ongoing work that we are all part of. And so I have pushed our board, I will continue to push this conversation because for me, it is part of who I am that we have to be having it. So I appreciate that you said that and I appreciate that you brought that conversation into the room and I really want to expand the conversation.
How then do you, what might be suggested then? Not necessarily you, but anybody. What are our next steps? What can the community do to support this school and this faculty as we transform the culture and the climate here to make it more equitable?
Yeah, we have to be that.
Yeah.
Okay? So it's not just, we need the school to be there, we need the adults in the community to be that as well. So that when we bring policy and we bring initiatives and we bring research-based practices that could actually work, we're having a different conversation. So it's, it's larger than just us sitting on this board. And I don't want to diminish that and I'm not saying that we're not, we don't have a responsibility to ensure that our staff person is, and that we're overseeing it in a way that it's getting done, in a way that makes it effective, but I don't want us to think that we're separate from what's happening because I'm tired of having that conversation. I'm tired of having the conversation that we're over here making decisions, they're over here doing something and something's happening different in the community and why isn't it happening in the school? Well, because it's not happening in the community. So I just, I just, I'm tired of us having the same conversation for my entire life too. So I would like us to do it a little bit differently as well, but it's not just us on this board and it's not just our administration and our educators, it is our community. So are we going to be about it or not?
Thank you. Mike, please.
I'm from the, a member of the Committee for Accurate Excellence in Education. The lady who just preceded me, thank you very much. That was my last question. If you look at the first study done on achievement in race, 1992, it's a sad document to read. It's branded inferiority throughout, not exclusively. It's shocking what our teachers thought of people of color and families of color 30 years ago. We've come a long way. We've got a long way to go. I want to mark this date and talk to you, it's time. Our teachers, you yourselves have gone through racial identity training and equity work, correct? Our teachers have. We now have a class, many of our students come in here having no exposure, just like the white adults who've moved to Oak Park River Forest, of truly understanding many of race in our history. We need to do better. We can be a trailblazer. I'm sure it's been done elsewhere. So I want to mark this date and I want to talk to you because I've raised this before. When I heard you say branded inferiority, much of the history of the honors program has been people choosing to go there to get out of something. Paul Noble said that. I'm sure you heard it when he said it, America to me. Let's mark this date to say, what can this community, in the blocks most of us live on where there might only be one or two families of color, we don't know each other and we certainly don't know our history. So I want to move that issue forward, just like the early childhood. And by the way, setting a precedent, something this community did in 1968, the open housing at Oak Park anyway, but it started through a coalition of people in River Forest and Oak Park. We've got to come together again and dedicate ourselves to what this board has pledged itself to do. I stand with you in moving this forward, but I also stand with John Taylor in saying, let's put all the cards on the table. And I suggest, John, that you read the RU review on the Access for All webpage because it gives a whole different interpretation of what happens to gifted, not gifted students, but higher achieving students under the kind of program being proposed here. Lastly, we know what happens to students of color historically across the country and systems that are structured like we've been structured for too long. It's got to change, but we also have to change hearts and minds about race. I want to meet you right now.
Can you tell what I'm going to do for our final last question? Hi, my name is Lyndon Francis and I have a recent graduate from the high school. Actually, what I'm about to say, I wish I had said it first because it's one of the things that I think is missing from the conversation and that is having a shared understanding of what we're talking about. And it's difficult to have a conversation when we're each talking about, each have in our mind a completely different picture of what we're discussing. And so I would hope as the conversation ensues, because this is still only the beginning, that we really come to grips with some more factual information about our students, about the way things are structured and about outcomes. I often hear about expensive. I often hear about expectations in a view of what students of color, but particularly black students, and who they might be or not be, and assumptions about white students and who we think they are, and what they may not be. And those are not necessarily all couched in fact. And so I would like us to begin to have this conversation based on some real information, so that we're all talking about the same thing. Because I think there are assumptions I'm hearing about what honors is, about what gifted is, about what college prep is, and as if it's all this homogenous thing as well, because there's so many classes. And all the classes aren't the same. So as I understand, one of the things that's happening as part of this whole effort is restructuring the curriculum so that there is a little bit more consistency and a higher expectation of quality across the board, because that's not something we had. And the assumption that every kid that's in honors, and I can speak to this because my daughter went through this school and took every possible honors class there was, and graduated with AP courses, and she will tell you that her classes were not homogenous. All the honors classes were not all, you know, our best and our brightest in the class. And what that looks like changes depending on the subject matter. So there's a lot we have to unpack so that we're really talking factually and not just out of our emotions or our fears. So I hope that as this conversation moves on, that the board could support that.
Because it is 9:5. And I know Dr. Moore said if it was 8:59, there would be no closing comment, but I would add...
This one has a burning closing comment.
Okay. Does any board member want to do it? I think at least one person should. I'd say...
I was going to motion to adjourn, but...
No, no, no. Stop. I'll give you the nod for that one. Thank you all, and this is the first of many conversations. And I do want to give a plug for, the board is doing some reading now and having discussions. And we invite our community into those discussions. And we're also, Dr. Coon, Adams, and I are thinking how we can broaden that to, I can't remember now, we make a suggestion about having a book club type thing for our community. Because until we're comfortable talking about what may undermine some of our questions and concerns as a community, that's how we come together. So we will, we are planning to have those types of events as well. So, but please, if you can't come to a board meeting, they're videoed, and we welcome your participation. And thank you for allowing us to have this conversation with you all this evening.
So before Dr. Moore brings the meeting to closure, on the Board of Education, staff, and administration, most importantly, our students, thank you for coming out too.